Stay that way and not put things in people's mind because they feel like that that can migrate on further down Highway 1.
Right.
And that's what they're trying to avoid, just trying to maintain the use of their own land at their leisure, not the leisure of big boy coming in and taking over and understand things that happen. I appreciate it, I'm sorry, went over the three minutes, I take Matthew's.
Commissioner, I was just gonna ask Mr. Sweeney, does he need to submit that in writing? Or do you have somebody taking notes? Because I don't wanna, if it's passed on to him, I don't want him to have to say, "Look, I asked for this." Well, actually, we probably have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Johnson and either from him or from you, we can get the information from that.
I'd like to have them involved, also Ms. Gloria Rains.
Okay.
Be great. Alright, thank y'all, appreciate you again.
Commissioner Middleton, Mr. Colvin has something.
I'm gonna reiterate that same issue that he asked for. If he asked for it, can we change that on the map to be agriculture? Okay, and that's just gonna be the way it is? And if they wanna expand over there at the port, then they have to come to a hearing like this.
That's right.
Let the people talk, and they talk, and then we make a vote.
Okay, that's correct.
So we go ahead and get that changed back to agriculture?
We certainly can do that.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Bill Weiner, did I get that correctly?
Weiner.
Weiner?
Weiner.
I had a 50/50, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way.
Hello, I'm Bill Weiner, retired architect planner. I live at number two Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am so much for this being passed. We've been operating in another century. We need to upgrade, and I can point out all kinds of things that could be improved. And they will be improved after we get it in place and find out what needs to be tweaked. But there is one thing that bothers me. I wasn't gonna speak, I came here to listen. But I've been involved in the development of this city and trying to keep it great. And for 65 years, 60 years, SWEPCo AEP has been a bully on this community. They get on all the boards, they walk their way, they threaten the citizens, "Do it this way, or we're gonna, you're not gonna have power." And they need to be treated like other businesses, making everything equal. Now, I've been to the last two meetings and I've heard about the trees. There's such a simple solution. Under the power lines, especially along alley right of ways, plant Magnolia grandiflora. It's our state tree, it has leaves all winter, all summer. You can top it and it'll grow this way rather than that way. The other thing on their heights, the height of their lines in the trees shouldn't be designated as a number. The height of the tree should relate to the bottom wire. And this simple solutions, I've lived in other cities. One city has no overhead lines. And here, they say it can't be done. Well, it can be done. John Hussey, when he was mayor, did a demonstration on Line Avenue around Olive to show that it could be done. We need to start moving toward getting rid of all these unsightly power lines there. Ways to do it. In Shreveport, we have a unique thing. Our deciduous trees, if you map them in the country, and the conifer trees, if you map them, there's one place they overlap, that's here. We should be promoting our green here. We have conifers and deciduous growing side by side, and we can use our indigenous native species that'll take care of themselves and not have a problem with the power lines. And we can't continue to let SWEPCo bully this community. Thank you.
Thank you. This map, do you have any more? That is all of the cards that I had, slips I had turned in. Is there anybody else in the audience? Come on up, please state your name and address for the record.
Did I give it to her or bring it to you?
Just give it to her, she can hang on to it.
Say good afternoon, good evening.
My name is Johnny Williamson, I live at 312 Pierre Avenue. I'm not elected at all point, I'm just a volunteer. I came last time and spoke, and I asked you about Pierre Avenue, and I talked to you about I-20. I mean, I'm sorry, I-49. But tonight are, I wasn't gonna speak, but he made a comment that a lot of the districts were gonna be changed from B1 to C1, and B2 to C2. And if that was a change, you'd notify the landowner. I wasn't notified.
Mr. Williamson, I wanna clarify what he was saying. What he's talking about is, what is B1 now is just reclassified as C1.
Right.
Nobody was notified, 'cause that's just, anybody who has a B1 designation right now will automatically be changed to a C1.
Right.
So nobody, I would say nobody was notified. We've done everything we could to notify everybody through the city that that's kind of the natural transition. It's just a reclassification of those, with some exceptions. Some of the land that was speculative or whatever, like where the port is at, might have been temporarily or under assumption removed from RA potentially to I-1. I think it was lowest designation on there. So, but the normal, if you had a normal business that was B1 right now, when the UDC passes, it will automatically become a C1. So that's just going from what's called business one to commercial one.
I could get that in writing?
That's, the classifications are, I think are listed on that chart, how they transition.
Okay, well, okay, good. The reason I'm here tonight is, I asked that Pierre Avenue be zoned as a commercial corridor.
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 Yes, sir.
The reason for that is because I've been sitting out in a chair looking and count cars and count emergency vehicles. Pierre Avenue, as I mentioned, and I'm sure all of y'all know, is the only egress and regress for I-20 between Hern Avenue and Line Avenue. It's really a very important street. All of the traffic from the Cooper Road area, the Allen Dale neighborhood, Leadverda Heights, they use Pierre Avenue to get to University Center, Medical Center. The traffic, the speed zones, on Pierre Avenue, there's less than four speed zones right now on the street. I counted the houses today, and there's less than six houses that's being used, that's livable, really. The rest of them are condemned, they're just sitting there, abandoned or abused or whatever. And as I mentioned to you, I-49 is coming, it's coming, ain't nothing you can do about it. But at least 200 feet, east and west of the right of way, like Southern Avenue, everything that's on the east side of the interstate is gonna be fine, 'cause it's gonna be toward the city of Shreveport, and the city gonna come that way. But everything that's on the other side, there's gonna be nothing there. Shreveport is known to build interstates that don't have a service role. Look at I-20, 31, 32, I-49. They're just using existing streets to do whatever. But if Pierre Avenue would be considered as a commercial corridor, boulevard, or whatever you wanna call it, I think it would really help the Allen Dale neighborhood. I've been in Shreveport since 1975. My time is up, isn't it?
Yeah, that's okay.
You didn't start the clock!
No, she controls the clock, I don't control the clock.
I wanna ask some questions. Mr. Williamson, Mr. Colvin will have something for you.
Sure.
So, on his part on the map, it shows commercial on his trade he's talking about?
Well, it's a patchwork of some commercial and some residential. And in most of these situations, coming back, in that area, because we did not know exactly what would be best in some cases, we would prefer that the owners of the property come to us and request a rezoning. So that if at some point in time, what you say may be true, that everyone along in that area wants to become commercial, then we allow them to go through the application process, 'cause you always have that right to come in and ask for that. But if you look at that corridor now, it's a combination of a patchwork of different zonings, some commercial, some residential. And so we're leaving it up to the future for the residents and for the owners of that property to approach us with what they would like to have in that area and be receptive to the possibility of commercial development.
Mr. Sweeney, your property, your property's business right now?
I own several pieces of property on Pierre Avenue. But one particular piece is on 1B.
Okay.
And this map right here is gonna become oral residential.
But if he's B1 now, it's gonna stay C1, it's not gonna go back residential?
Right, depending on, and we'd have to look closely at the map.
Are we being taped?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good, 'cause I...
What I would almost suggest you do is, it would be best, probably, for you to come and visit with us at the MPC office, and we'll get a map out and look at it, see where your property is, and give you some feedback on that. How about that?
And one more question, last question, Mr. Sweeney. If it is residential, and it stays residential?
Right.
What you're saying is to come request it to be commercial, that's gonna charge that fee to come and make it commercial, right?
Right.
Five hundred?
Seven fifty. I think it's seven fifty.
Okay, I got you. So, if you have a residential lot and you wanna make a commercial on that street, he's saying it's mixed use now, you pay $700 and it goes commercial?
What I'm saying is I have a business.
And it's gonna go?
And I want it to stay.
It's gonna stay commercial. And we are being taped.
Yes. Mr. Williamson, Mr. Amity has something for you.
I just have one more comment.
Sure.
'Cause I can understand where you're coming from, but we, I can, we have enough problems in the office with being the bad guy anyway.
No, you're not, you're not the bad guy.
Well, in many cases, we're proceeding like Mr. Lynn said earlier, we're make, when there's two people opposing each other, somebody walks away mad, somebody walks away happy. But we don't, we can't just rezone someone's property and then it's commercial, and then they come back and say, "Well, I wanted to fix that house up and live in it." Well, living in a commercial zoning is not allowed. So you can see where, but I think the biggest champion that could get behind your cause would be your city councilman to look at, pushing that forward and bringing all the resources together to make that happen. Because we act many times on requests for the zoning change for a use, for a specific use, and if there was something that the city council or the community leaders in your community wanted to push to maybe attract some different type of business. So, can you see what I'm saying? That would probably be your pack of least resistance for achieving your goal.
And again, the reason I'm here is because I know I-49 is coming.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to see possibly Pierre Avenue becoming a business corridor, because the right of way from the interstate is gonna be at least a minimum of 200 feet.
Who's your councilman?
Mr. Bradford.
And I think he's here, he's probably...
He's not here tonight.
Well, he's back there, I think he just slipped in, but he's probably, he's one of the most vocal, hardest working councilmen, you know, he's always working on something when you talk to him. So, I believe he would at least listen to your, what you have in mind.
Yes, sir, you know, I came to the meeting, I was on time, I didn't have my camera, I ran home and got it. 'Cause he would be here, and hopefully I'd get a picture with him tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Williamson, know this. This whole board, including that staff over there, well, nothing more than to see that redevelopment happening in that corridor down there.
Right.
Because you can plant all the houses down there you want to, but if you don't have essential services for those people, then you're doing them a disservice.
We don't.
They have to have grocery stores, they have to have gas stations, they have to have, you know, the little daycares, convenience stores, and good schools. So it comes as a package deal, and some of the anchors that we see in these redevelopments, we see a lot of houses planning going on in that area, in any of these type areas where you're trying to redevelop, intercity or brownfields, and you miss those essential services. And that is the key component that's missing. People that don't have the availability of cars, people who are older that can't necessarily get to LB Road or Yuri Drive or Alpines Road where all those services are available, need those services in those communities. And that is, so, if you decide you're gonna start doing commercial development to help redevelop down there, you'll find no greater ally than this board.
Well, I don't wanna keep you out of time, but I've already got something in mind, and Mr. McIntyre here, he's aware of it, and he's, hey, he's been there for me. If I had his phone number, I'd call him on the weekend.
The more we talk, the more people get involved. Ms. Bessie has something for you?
Sure. It's not for him, it's for Mr. Sweeney.
She wants to know when you're gonna come to Stoner Hill and the Bell, that's what she wants to know.
Now, you're right, you're right, I'm talking to...
Alright, thank you, and...
No, thank y'all, we appreciate the job you're doing. I know it's, you know, as you say, you got good guys and bad guys, but y'all doing a great job.
Thank you.
I read the codes in other cities, and by far y'all are the easiest to interpret.
Well, thank you.
But thank you, God bless.
Ms. Bessie, you have something, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, I have something for Mr. Sweeney. Because I heard you say what the people want in their community, commercial or residential. And I know our voices, and I'm talking about all of the areas, Monluther King, I know you remember, you was not here, but Dr. Wilson was on the board, and we would come down here, we voiced our opinion everywhere. When they said master plan, we were there. And our voices, I'm saying, from looking at all of this, not being heard. And it is hurting when you can hear things going in other areas, and nothing coming like mini malls, small business, nothing. And we certainly spoke out, the people been here, but their voices are not being heard. You was not the executive director when this first started. But I keep saying, we started day one with this, talking about mini malls, because everything was going down on Yuri Drive. And you saying, "Come, meet, meet, meet." But that's why our people are not coming, because they're tired of just meeting, meeting, and their voices not being heard. And I keep saying that over and over. And I'm especially talking about Stony Hill. Because we know it is something that can be done in our area for mini malls. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Nope? Alright, we're gonna move on then. Staff recommendations for amendments to the UDC and the final draft and zoning map.
Hello, John. Hey, John, we need that up on the deal. Okay, we're gonna talk about amendments, and it's gonna be hard for you to probably read this, but I'm gonna just highlight some of the things that we're proposing. And I've got quite a few of these to go through, so I'm going to be as brief as I can, but informative enough that you understand how we've addressed maybe a concern or an issue that you brought up from the last meeting on the 29th. So, the first one is merely just a correction. We had some, an error in this definition for relating to tree removal plan, and we corrected that. That's just a typo scenario that we corrected. Item number two is having to do with the language concerning transparency. And the feedback we got was that perhaps the 25% requirement for the second floor was perhaps not exactly what the people wanted, and it perhaps from an energy efficiency concern and the western sun exposure related issues, that it might make more sense to go to a 15%. And let me give you an idea of what that looks like. The bottom floor is 50%, the second floor is 25%, and the top floor, the third floor, is 15%. If you look across the street to the YMCA building, which was built in 1925, it's built at 15%. So we actually feel like that might be a more realistic measure for what we expect our builders to do. The other one too, that's next here, has to do with specific building materials. We agreed that terminology was not appropriate to say that the materials were prohibited, but rather that they're limited in a certain percentage. And what we did is we changed the percentage from 25% to 35%, and we decided that EFS would be not on that list, that if you wanted to build a building entirely of EFS, you could do so. But that we don't want an all metal building, we don't think that that gives the best impression of our community, but rather instead, we have the opportunity to design something that looks good. And remember, this is from the facade that faces the street, not the sides, not the back. You can do solid metal on the back and the sides if you want to, it's what's facing the street. Very important to understand that that's all it's requesting. This is a good example here of where we have a variety of materials and buildings that look good or better for our community, where you have a mix of materials as it faces the street. And again, on the backside of these buildings, they tend to be sometimes one material entirely. Next, we were talking about language related to, this is just relating to mobile homes, and we use the term non-combustible or fire retardant or fire resistant. This is a specification that kinda comes out of the HUD requirement that was approved for mobile homes or manufactured housing after 1976, basically requiring a higher level of fire prevention, and this is based on the National Fire Protection Association We also saw that there was a terminology in there, thought that was a good catch, on mobile homes, you know, mobile home park, you can't make the front door the dominant feature, because typically they're stacked like sardines in a can, and the side, the entryway is on the side of the mobile home. And so therefore, it didn't really make any sense to have it based on the front elevation, so we did change that wording. Next, item number six, this has to do with the historic preservation. We had got a lot of feedback from the Highland group about some of their concerns about what is in the ordinance, and we just went in and found a location in the ordinance that says, "Historic preservation commission review is required for alterations visible to the public, demolitions, relocations, and new construction involving designated historic properties or properly located in historic districts in accordance with Chapter 36 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances." So if you are in a historic district, you're gonna have to go through the process of touching base with the HPC or the Historic Planning Preservation Commission. Next change has to do with permitted uses. It was asked of us to clarify this, so when it says in the use matrix, it'll say permitted by rights. So to understand it is a permitted use, that it's a right that you have with that particular zoning, it's just a clarification. Number eight, this has to do with repair of vehicles in the rear yard of such establishments. So basically, we understood that some people can't afford to have all the repairs inside any closed building. So we approached it from a different approach, which we said that the repairs shall take place not in the front or side portions of the property, but can be done in the rear part of the property as long as it's screened from public view. And we felt like that was an amenable approach. Next one has to do with substation design and standards, and I'm gonna come back to this twice. And this is, this was the negotiation work that we did with SWEPCo that John Hubbard made reference to. I'll mention this twice, 'cause it's applicable in two different sections. But when it comes to substations, basically, we're gonna have a note to the UDC that says, "All electric transmission distribution lines, wires, poles, lighting, along with any and all related facilities in any way necessary for service by the electric public utility, subject to the jurisdiction of the Louisiana Public Service Commission, shall be exempt from all limitations and requirements of this code, except for requirements included in this section," which basically says, "A new utility facility, including maintenance and service operations, unless otherwise stated in this section, must be screened from view from the adjacent residential areas and public right of way with a solid fence or wall at a minimum of six feet and a maximum of eight feet." And I'm gonna jump on down to say that as of the effective date of this code, that's on page, the next one down, "All electric substations will be subject to such screening requirements determined on a case-by-case situation through a special use permitting process," which means all substations require a special use permit, which means the MPC will always see those requests, and they will also go on to the city council or parish commission's final approval. With a special use request or a special use permit, you have to have a site plan, and you will get an opportunity to review the options concerning screening, whether it's needed or not needed on a case-by-case basis. Again, also too, it says, keep on going, let me go down on further, and SWEPCo was in agreement with these changes. Major change related to, again, this comes back to vehicle repair. The other one had to do with gas stations. This has to do with repair vehicles that do not take place within the building, and they must be done also on the front side, outside of the front and side yard portions, as I mentioned earlier. This also includes the thing that if any outdoor repairs would only be allowed in the rear yard, must be screened. I mentioned that already earlier, but if I go on down to the next item, "The sale of new vehicles is prohibited. The selling of used vehicles is allowed, provided the establishment is located within a zoning district that permits the selling of used cars." And that was one of the changes that we made there, based on a request from our meeting on the 29th. I'm running pretty fast through this, and I'm just trying to get you through this, we have 33 of these to go through. Okay, so, on temporary outdoor entertainment, we just switched out the name from manager to representative, that was requested, we did make that change. Number 12, on barbed wire and razor wire fences, we started looking around to see where that was in existence, and we realized it's in a lot of places. And so therefore, instead of just restricting it to just industrial, we went ahead and allowed it in the RA, which makes sense, that's agricultural, C4, IMU, I-1, and I-2 districts. That's pretty much covers where most of the time that's gonna be a case. If somebody wants barbed wire in something outside of that district, they can ask for a variance from the ZBA. Okay, the next one has to do fence and wall construction. This has to do with the finished side of the fence. We put in a caveat that said, you know, basically, when you're doing a fence and it's being seen from the public view, we want the finished side. This is really especially pertaining to commercial and industrial developments, we want the finished side of a fence facing out. But if it's between single-family lots, that provision should be waived. I mean, if you're in a single-family neighborhood and you wanna maintain the prettiest side of the fence on your side and the ugliest side on the other side, that's fine, we don't have a problem with that, and so we did make that adjustment. Number 14, accessory structures, we included shade covering systems. That was a comment that was made. We understand that in some cases, you may need to have certain awnings that are structures out into certain uses, and we do understand that just by including that, that it covers that. Detached garages, there was a, we had a must in there, and we changed it to a may, that you may have access to a finished-out public alley, but we're not requiring it, because so many of our alleys are in disrepair, so it didn't make sense to say must anymore. That, again, that was really a typo. Okay, number 16, refuse containers. A question was asked about, "What about dumpsters and recycling containers that are existent now? Will they have to shield those?" And we're saying, "No, you don't have to, as the effective date of this ordinance, the only thing that would trigger that would be if the site is redeveloped, or if the existing building and parking are going to be expanded, then we would ask them to provide the shielding or the screening." Next item, number 17, this has to do with something related to parking, and this, that is, we're saying that if, when a parking facilities are constructed for non-residential use over 15,000 square feet in gross area, the number of vehicle spaces maybe, must not exceed 115% of the required minimum. We changed that and just simply said, "However, allowances above the parking requirement may be approved administratively by the executive director, and this does not apply to restaurants." Going to number 18, this is exemptions for parking requirements. This is a very important one, because it has to do with the older neighborhoods, the very thing that we've been talking about. What we built into the UDC are some allowances and some variations that will incentivize redevelopment. One of them is this clause that says, "Existing non-residential structures that are 60 years of age or older, as the effective date of this code, that currently do not provide the required amount of parking on the lot are exempt from all off-street parking requirements, regardless of any change in use and intensity of use." You see a lot of the older areas, we don't wanna stifle reinvestment in those areas. This we feel like is an adequate and a good provision for the inner part of the city. Number 19, this has to do with billboards. One of the, we had, this is another example, not only with SWEPCo, but with the billboard industry, in particular Lamar. We had no less than six meetings with Lamar, made great progress, came to an agreement on this, on the UDC. This was one of the last changes they asked us to make, in which we just basically changed the wording here in this provision pertaining to, and I'll read that for signs in the I-2, I-1, C2, C3, C4 districts, "Cutouts or extensions up to 50 square feet of additional area may be allowed by the Metropolitan Planning Commission's approval, and cutouts above 50... 51 square feet may be permitted administratively by the Executive Director," and we had no problem with that provision. Next one is another provision related to the billboard industry, where we just basically clarified what a non-conforming site was versus what a non-conforming billboard was, so that it made sense and that they're still allowed to get credit when they remove certain billboards for putting billboards in allowable locations. And again, this is an amendment we made through our conversations and negotiations with Lamar. Number 21, landscape approval. It was asked, "Why aren't architects on the list of allowable people to do landscape plans?" We simply just went ahead and added that to the list. It made sense to do so. Number 22, landscape plan approval. Basically, we had put in a sentence here that could be misconstrued to indicate we were going to go above and beyond the requirements of the normal landscaping, so we simply removed that and left it such that the Executive Director will evaluate the appropriateness of landscape plan and may approve or approve with conditions. Number 23, and I'm sorry to have such a lengthy convers, line of these, but this is the result of the changes we're trying to address. It says, basically, this is that we had a requirement in there for what they call an annual landscape water table requirements, and we realized that was probably over the top. We took that out. They still have to provide us some information based on the hydro zones, but they don't have to give us the elaborate table requirements for how the sprinkler system will work. So we did take that out from the ordinance. Number 24, this also has to do with landscaping. It comes back that this was kind of a miswritten section of the ordinance, and we clarified it. We just basically says, "If you're going to make a change to your landscape plan that result in a reduction or an addition to the net amount of plant material as specified on your approved landscape plan, that that may be approved by the Executive Director, just administratively. You don't have to go to a board or get approval from anyone else." But if it has to do with a, with a, with a special use permit, if it has to do with a small plan unit development or plan unit development, we believe that if you're going to go below what was approved by this body and the City Council and the Parish Commission, that you're going to have to go back to them if you're going to make radical changes in your landscape plan. If you, if the net amount of required plant material does not change, a modified landscape plan can be approved administratively by the Executive Director. Number 25, this has to do with installation of plant materials. We had said that you could do soil testing, but after we started asking people, nobody does soil testing, so we took that out. So that's, that's an example where we found things that, that people brought to our attention that were just basically not necessary. Way we look at it is that if you're going to plant plants, and you're going to plant the wrong ones, and you're going to put them in the wrong kind of soil, at the end of the day, you're responsible for replacing them if they die, so it's smarter to always find something that fits the soil and the weather conditions for your property. Okay, number 26, this has to do with certificate of occupancy. We have a temporary certificate of occupancy that we offer people for up to 90 days if they don't get their landscaping in because of weather conditions, and so we built in a fail-safe measure that said that if there were other unforeseen circumstances, that either myself or my zoning administrator could add an additional 30 days to that 90 days, which means they could go up to 120 days before, to allow them enough time to get their landscaping in appropriately. We had a typo on number 27. That's all we did, removed the word for, or put in the word for. Number 28, I think that's where we're at now. This has to do with tree trimming and pruning. Okay, this is a, this is probably the more significant change that was made, and it does have to do with SWEPCO, but it also has to do with something more. I'm not going to repeat that it still has the caveat in there relating to SWEPCO, which we discussed and agreed upon, but what it tries to do is it goes a little further to talk about some of the issues we've had with trees that are in the right-of-way. And there's been some controversy over that, and we felt it appropriate to go ahead and incorporate something that basically gives guidance to the fact about trees that are located in the city or parishes' right-of-way and how to deal with that. And it, and it gives, you know, the right for the city and the parish to do what they need to do in that area, but if there is a tree that's been in the neighborhood, that's in the right-of-way, that was probably planted by someone 75 years ago, and it's of significant size, 30 inches or larger in caliber, that there ought to be a process by which they have to at least go through a permitting process before they remove the tree. And this gives a fail-safe process for that purpose. But it also very specifically says in here, if you look at H, and I think that's on the next page, "Public utilities, nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit public utilities from pruning or removing trees that encroach upon electric, telephone, or cable television, transmission, gas, sewer, or water pipes." And here's the thing, again, back with SWEPCO, pruning. "The utility provider, whether it is electric, telephone, cable, so on and so forth, shall present yearly pruning plans located within designated utility easements across public property. The applicable department, at their discretion, may follow up with said utility provider to provide, or to provide, or to address any issues identified in the plan." When I say said department, that means SPAR, the Public Works Department of the City of Shreveport, and the Public Works Department of Parish. It's then very specifically says, "The electric utility provider will provide a vegetation management plan submitted to," the same one they submit to the Louisiana Public Service Commission, "that will be provided to," again, those departments that I mentioned, but it does not give those departments the right to review and approve those plans. It just simply opens the door for conversation, because what it will do is give, let's say, Shelley advanced knowledge that something's coming a certain time across a certain piece of property, and if she needs to reach out to the neighbors, or if she needs to have a conversation about something to be, to make SWEPCO aware of maybe a problem that they're not aware of, this gives her the opportunity to do that. And that was brought in through this negotiation process with SWEPCO. Number 29, this has to do with the protection and preservation of trees. We added that no clear cutting is allowed unless specifically authorized by an approved tree removal plan. And basically, it doesn't prohibit clear cutting. It does not interfere with harvesting of your trees. That's a state of Louisiana law that we can't circumvent. And so basically, unless you're in the development process with us, if you want to go out there and remove all your trees, and you can call it harvesting, you certainly can do that. That provision is still open to people. Number 30, this was something that was a response to the Home Builders Association. They asked very, this is something that came in kind of late, that wasn't even part of the 29th, but it was something we got feedback on in just the last few days. And the idea is, is that if you're going to put a fence within a servitude, a passage of servitude, you need to understand what that means, that if the city of Shreveport or, or whatever utility has to come down through there and make changes, and if they have to remove your fence, and they have to remove certain items that are in the passage of servitude, that's going to be on you for, the expense is going to be on you. In other words, they're not going to reimburse you for that, because if you cross over into their territory, which you, which they often do, but nine times out of 10, nobody ever bothers it. But there's occasions when they have to come in here and do something, well, they just want it very clearly stated that they can do that, but understanding the property owner is responsible for that cost if the fence has to come down. And again, that's in response to the Home Builders Association. All right, so let's go to item number 31. We're almost done here. This has to do with just, again, a grammatical error that we corrected on this section, nothing major. This relates to an item, number 32. We went back and revisited the issue about educational facilities. That includes public schools as well as your charter school. And we came to the conclusion that it made a lot more sense to go back and make it so that if you are in a single-family neighborhood, and someone proposes to build a school, and nine times out of 10, it's going to be a charter school, because they don't build a lot of public schools these days, that we think it's appropriate and better that the neighborhood be notified and go through a public hearing process and have the opportunity to be heard, not only here at the MPC Board, but at the City Council or at the Parish. So we went back and made that change to the matrix table, so that instead of being a P permitted, is now an S. So basically, we feel like, why did we do that? Because we all know that when a school comes in, they usually generate a tremendous amount of traffic, and it made much more sense to give the neighborhood an opportunity to have input on that decision-making process with both the Council and the Commission, as well as with the MPC Board. Number 33 is merely a change in the zoning map. This includes a portion of property. This came from Shreveport Common, in which they asked to include South Cotton, West McNeil East of Louisiana, and North of the Railroad Tracks as part of the D1AC zoning district. We have no problem with that. Okay, now I've gone through every amendment that the staff recommends, and I will leave you with this statement. What we are recommending as staff to you, the board, we recommend to you that you approve the Unified Development Code and the zoning map as amended. So in other words, the document will be amended based on these 33 items that we have already listed out to you publicly. And we believe that will strengthen and make it a better document, more user-friendly, and I will say once again, it is the, what I call exhaustive effort on the part of the staff to continuously talk to stakeholders, to the public, to elected officials who have told us the things they see, and the board members who have said, "These are things that are of concern to us," and we have attempted to find what I call a common ground and a solution for the vast majority of those requests. And so what I believe is that this will make the document better, the zoning map better, and I won't sit here and tell you there won't be other changes that won't occur. When it gets to City Council or to the Parish Commission, I would anticipate additional amendments from them, possibly, but it's to be seen. But that's fine. That's just part of the process. So what I recommend to you is that this whole slate of amendments that we've laid out for you, instead of you voting on each and individual one, would be one inglobo statement, so that when you, if you vote to approve the UDC as amended, it will include these amendments. So having said that, I now present it back to you.
Okay. I have nobody in the queue. Anybody like to speak or comment upon that? Mr. Remedy?
We had some, I mean, I'm actually surprised at how many of the changes that you guys were able to get put in there. I mean, you guys must have worked, you know, endless hours on this, and I appreciate you guys listening and implementing several of these things. I would say I've been through this new UDC, I don't know how many times, lots and lots of times, and I've made many of the suggested changes that you guys were, were good enough to listen to and do every, put every, forth every effort, and like we talked about it before you started, that there would be some things that I still was not just thrilled about, but was, I think you guys have met in the middle of many, many, many things. But what I'm concerned about is that we called a room full of people from the, from the public here tonight and asked for their opinions, and now we're going to vote on something that was drafted before this meeting, which to me seems a little backwards. And we have a policy here at the MPC where we always have to have something presented a month in advance, and then we vote. So we give that, any type of policy, at least 30 days to be properly vetted and questions asked on it, but now we're asking for the biggest thing to ever happen to this city probably since I've been alive, and we've got our final copies today, but now we have to vote on it, but we've not allowed us to take the consideration of what was said here today by many of the people that stood up and voiced their concerns. So I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but we've asked these folks to come out and give us our opinion, and we said, "Yeah, that's nice, but we're going to go ahead and vote on what we prepared before the meeting ever began to move it forward." So I think that while, I don't think that too much time needs to pass, that we could vote on this maybe at the first meeting in November, or the only meeting in November, our first Wednesday, but it would give us some time to print an entire copy off of all of the changes, and something that I will vote yes on would be something that I've read and felt like I did my due diligence and made a responsible vote to folks that sent, that appointed me to this board, and the people in my community that expect us to do the responsible thing. We've seen many pieces of legislation in Baton Rouge and in Washington, that they just run them through, and let's see how bad this hurts, and then we'll change it later, that ends up having unintended consequences. So I don't want this to be one of those. That's my comments.
Anything else?
That's your comments? Nobody else?
Ms. Bessie.
Ms. Bessie?
Yes.
Got in under the wire before I spoke.
Well, I concur with what you just said, because just yesterday, I got my information. Today, when I got home, it was something right there at my door, and just when I arrived here, it's something else a little bit different, and I'm not able to comprehend like that. I need some time to meditate, and I'd like to read and comprehend what I have read, and I do need, I'm speaking for myself. I do need some more time before I would take a vote on this. We have the citizens here tonight, they have voiced their opinion, and I think we need to listen a little more, comprehend a little more, get some more information.
Is that all, Ms. Bessie?
Yes, it is.
I have Ms. DeMarto.
Yes, can you, can you refresh my memory on how many public meetings we've had on this over the last four years?
Oh, the edge. Well, four years, I can't go back four years. I can go back two years. We've had probably, now counting around eight, public hearings on this, or public forums at least, where people have given us input. The five open houses, the series of stakeholder meetings, the 101s with elected officials, the stakeholder meetings with the Neighborhood Association in August, and then this is our second public hearing related to this, plus the comments we've received on the website and the information we receive from citizens on a daily basis, including the comments we got from the zoning map circuit that we did back in January and February of this year. We've done roughly now 17 months of public outreach, and pretty, pretty extensive.
I appreciate you refreshing everybody's memories on that. And in my opinion, we could, we can keep kicking this can down the road. We are a recommending body, and this is a time we've done due diligence. I applaud the staff and all the board members for countless amount of hours, dedication, reading, public meetings. Since one particular person is very interested in how many I've attended, I've attended all but two. So there's a time, there's, we could have another meeting, and we could have more public meetings, and there's always going to be some. So I think we've done our due diligence, we've opened it up to the citizens, we've listened to everybody, we've, we're cooperative and modified and amended up to the nth hour. And I know I received, every time you amended it, our board received, and I had plenty of time to read the amendments and what we're doing. They were minor, some major changes, two major changes, most of them were minor. We've been studying this, or I have, and there's several board members, Mr. Windsor, Dale Colvin, and myself for the last four years, and the others for the last two or three years, wherever they've been on the board. Ms. Bessie, I'm sorry, you've been there for all those years too, and we've been reading it, every day, all day, four years. So I applaud everybody, and I thank the citizens for their input, and they were heard and valued. So I think it's time to make a move. City Council, Parish Commission has the final say.
Is that all, Ms. DeMarto?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Thank you. I have Mr. Remedy. I have Mr. Remedies.
I just want to make sure what I'm hearing correctly is that you're suggesting we go ahead and vote on it tonight, although we've asked folks to come and give their opinion, but we're not going to consider or implement any of their opinions before we vote on it to move it forward. So, in essence, they've wasted their time to come in. I just, I don't understand that, even if something as small as any type of policy that we have, we normally allow thirty days of review for it, that we're going to vote on something that was prepared before this meeting, that we've asked people to come and give their, their input on this, but we're not going to implement any of their input, we're just going to move forward anyway, which I think is the reason why so many people are frustrated with government today, is because we don't listen, we just do what we're going to do anyway. So, I just want to make sure that's, is the intent to move forward and not listen to what these folks say and not implement it at all, and just say, "Well, they'll fix it later."
I don't think she's saying, "We're just going to move forward." The thing she's saying is that we've had, time after time, we've gone through it, if we go through it again, we're going to find something, a period, go here, comma, go there. So, at some point, you have to draw closure. And I see nothing wrong with drawing closure, and then if there are some changes that need to be made, then Mr. Sweeney and his staff get together, they make the changes, and then we make it final. So, we'll be doing this from now on if, you know, we just keep going back with the same thing.
You want to say something?
Well, I mean, I've got three people in the queue. I want to stay with the queue. Mr. Remedies had, are you, Ruth, or you have more?
Yeah, no, that was, that was it.
Okay, now, I've got Mr. Andrews, now I've got Ms. DeMarto, and then I've got Ms. Cooper. Ms. Bessie, if you want to jump in, punch that button. Mr. Andrews.
I've not said anything this evening. I thought I'd just kind of sit and listen. You know, we'd get to a point where we could put this to bed and then, then go put to bed. I think it's important, and I'm saying this coming from a friend of mine sitting in the audience, who spent all afternoon upstairs negotiating for his company to make this a document that he can take back to his boss and say, "This is where we are, and this is what we've got done." If he had known that he'd have another four or five days to work on this, he probably would not have stressed out as much as he did this afternoon trying to get it done for this evening. And he knows who I'm talking about. And I know he's not the only one, and I think it's important that if we say we're going to vote on it, if we say we're going to move this document forward, then I think what needs to happen this evening is that we need to do that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. DeMarto next.
And to answer specifically, I'm not going to get to Mr. Remedies, I'm not going to get tit-for-tat for you, but I will say that every vote that we take will have people speak. So, we're just kicking it down the road again. We could come back next month or next meeting, and we'd have to, we'd have people, and we're always going to have somebody speak. So, it's time, it's due time.
I've got Ms. Cooper.
I just think it's argumentative to say that a vote tonight is ignoring or dismissing comments that we heard tonight. I think that's an unfair and argumentative statement to make. I think that the MPC has been listening, actively listening, and asking for comments, and seeking out opinions, and redrafting, and redrafting, and listening to everybody for years. And I think that, I agree with Ms. Dr. Pennywell, I think that, I think kicking this down is more like what government is doing when we get irritated with government, and that's not making a decision. I think it's time to make a decision, I think it's way beyond time to make a decision. And we're not voting this into law, by the way, we are only recommending it, the City Council. We are not, we're not that big. So, I think it's time to do that, and I think it is irresponsible not to do it.
Ms. Cooper, you're through? Ms. Bessie?
Well, I'm thinking I've said enough, and I know how I am going to vote.
Do you have a call for that?
Well, can the chair say something now? I have nobody else in the queue. There are some specific things that I think I would like to see changed, and one of them was the property off of Leonard Road, I'd like to see moved back to RA, and let them go through their due diligence process in the future if they want to move it back to the I-1, and right of amendment, or whatever they want to, and take that issue off the table. I think that would be prudent and wise. I think we need to seriously look at L.A.R.S. 956.52. Mr. Settle, I think, pointed that out, is about a five-year window, if that is applicable, and whether or not we need to insert any language in regards to that. I had made a comment in my, some of my recommendations I sent out, that we were limiting landscape drawings and stuff to people licensed in Louisiana. We're going to have some national firms that may do landscaping, and I think that language still says licensed in Louisiana.
Is that required? Would you have to be licensed in Louisiana to?
Well, I mean, normally, it would have to be a Louisiana licensed landscape architect.
So, somebody like the, not, somebody like the big developer that did the Kroger Marketplace out off of Lydely Road couldn't use their own license architect because they were licensed in Texas?
Usually, something like that, they would get an architect record, like a local person, they would be the designer, and then they would, you know, contract out someone locally who would do that. Is that correct?
Yeah. If you're looking at any ordinance, landscape architect.
She can answer it, okay. Quickly.
Landscape architects are licensed by the state because of the local microclimates and the climate, so typically, I haven't seen another ordinance that doesn't say a landscape architect or architect licensed by, name the state that you're in. They can contract out and hire local to do that, but you need them signing off on that based on records.
Thank you. The only other, there's a couple other items. There was, you'll have to explain this one to me, please. Trees, thirty inches, it went scratched out, and it was eight inch to BBH. That's diameter.
Right. The trees that we're most interested in are eight inches in diameter. If you're going to save some trees, those are the ones we're interested in. And that was a typo, because it should have said eight, because later on in the ordinance, it says eight, and somehow thirty got put in there.
Just real quick, explain to me how that is applicable to just an individual landowner as, or somebody that's developing.
An individual landowner is not technically affected by this. If you have property and you have trees on it, you can do anything you want to with those trees.
Even beyond the thirty inches in diameter, as long as it's not.
I mean, I don't have any say over someone's, like, if it's on their, in their yard or whatever. But if a developer is going forward with something that he wants to do, then what we ask for is that if you have a thirty-inch or greater diameter, and case in point, that was the tree that was on the St. Mark's property that the big issue came up, it's thirty-six inches, we just simply say you have to get a permit to remove that tree, which is simply coming down here and requesting a permit. And if you tell them basically that it's diseased, or that there's a problem with sight, visual, or if it's been damaged in some way, typically, it can be removed, but it just slows it down just enough so that if the neighborhood wants to take a stand on it, it gives them an opening. And that's what they were so concerned about, is that there was a tree, yes, it was in the right of way, and yes, it's technically the city's tree, but when someone started to try to remove it, well, you know what happened. So, that's a provision that just simply is a spell-safe provision.
I have no issue with that. I was the one that said tree heights should all be lowered if they were in proximity of power line from twenty-five feet down to eighteen feet, because I don't want to, I don't want to go through this again, okay? And now, we're talking about new development, new construction.
Yes, sir.
Which a lot of that stuff is buried anyway, under new construction. But, you know, let's quit planting a hundred-foot tall oak trees under the power lines. I mean, let's have some common sense about this stuff. And with secondary lines as low as eighteen feet, I just felt like, you know, maybe we could go a little bit, under new construction, a little more common sense about not creating a problem to begin with. So, that was, that was the thing about that.
Sure.
I think there was failure for us to talk about the new policy you have about the pre-meetings, no cost for people to come in and sit down.
I agree.
And, and I think there's a little issue of conveying that message to people about how, before somebody spends eight or ten thousand dollars, that they can have a pre-meeting and tell them, and they can find out whether or not it's a viable development, and I think we need to convey that, I think, a little bit better, so.
And if you'd like for me to, I'll just take a second here. We have a new procedure that went into place in August the first, for free, you heard it right, for free, you can come in with your conceptual plan of what you want to do before you spend the thousands of dollars on investment in design, and get not only feedback from the MPC, but from the city engineering department, the fire department, water and sewer, the parish departments. We do this on a weekly basis, where we will meet with the developer, or is it two, every two weeks, every two weeks? We meet with the developers, go over all the issues, so that they know what the cost is going to be, what the obstacle's going to be, before they ever have to spend any significant money. There was a gentleman in here that made a statement. I wanted to say something at that point in time. We've already fixed that problem. That happened on August the first, and it's part of the UDC going forward. If you want to put your toe in the water, to test the water, to see if it's going to be a workable project, we'll help you through that for free. And then, if you're serious about development, then the requirements come into play, and the checklist, and what you have to provide. The whole idea is to make you permit-ready, so that when you get through with the MPC, and you get through with the City Council, or you get through with the administrative process with the staff, you are ready to go forward with the permit and to build. And that's called efficiency and speed. We reduced that process from sixty to ninety days down to thirty days or less. We've already done that, and unfortunately, I think you're right. The message has not gotten out to certain developers who have just not, the ones that have, even the gentleman that he mentioned, Andy Craig, came back and said, "I love the process." And I've had other people come to us and say, "Look, we wish that it's been in place years ago. We have a process that even Bojor City doesn't have." What do you think about that? That's what I'm trying to say. But that's my advertisement for the night evening, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. I do agree with Mr. Remedies in this respect, that we've had so much comment, so much, just like the changing of the property on the, on the map back to RA, but there does reach a point where you've finally got to draw a line in the sand and say it's time to move on.
And sir, you're more than welcome to add that as an amendment. If you want to add that to the list of the amendments that we've offered to do that, changing that property back to RA, we can certainly do that tonight.
That would need to be a separate motion to add that.
Yes, it would.
All right. I do have two people in the queue. I have Ms. Bessie, and then I have Mr. Jackson. Ms. Bessie?
Yes. I watch your show every day, saying, "Let's make a deal." I just wonder how many people would have been here today to make a deal. It's one guy, I am so fond of him, would want him to have everything. But when I hear that it was a deal made, and they are satisfied now, I'm just wondering how many more people could have been here today early, starting at nine o'clock, and saying, "I want to come and make a deal." And when I stated, I have never received information like I have in the last three days concerning the master plan. I'm speaking for myself, and I know when I get something, I see something, I do, I'm going to read it, and I'm going to comprehend it, but that's all I wanted to say. I have a dear friend, and I have talked with him one-on-one, and I know what he's asking for. Yes, I'm for it, but I'm saying, how many more people made comments like tonight? You follow what I'm saying? Are we really giving them a chance? Are we being fair?
The vast majority of the comments that were made tonight, we actually have addressed in one fashion or another, because some of the amendments actually address some of those concerns. Others, we've answered already point-blank. There actually was nothing put on the table that we haven't already put something into place. When the comments were made from some, one of the developers about the process, we've actually done that as of August the first. So, most, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the things that were brought up tonight, we've either answered, or we already have something in place to take care of it, or if they want to pursue it with the City Council and the Parish Commission to make further amendments, they can do so. So, the door has been opened for anyone that wanted to come in and talk to us. No one has been turned away. No one who wanted to talk to us has been put aside, and we have reached out countless times, saying, "What do you think about this?" When we would make changes to the document, we would actually send it out to different groups to say, "Here are the changes, you know, give us feedback if there's something that you want to tell us." So, I honestly can't say to you that we have left any stone unturned when it came to reaching out. And it just happened that some of these situations, like with SWEFCO, were deals that we had to make at the eleventh hour, and that's just, that's just the name of the game, that's just the way it works, you all know that. And so, we've worked with so many groups that we've pretty much exhausted the list of who we could talk to for the most part.
That it, Ms. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say thank you to all of the citizens who've come out, and to staff who've worked on this, and to all of commissioners, colleagues who've listened to this. I think the very first question that was asked tonight had to do with the extent to which this was, and the agility of this document. We agree that it was a living document, which means that while it is certainly not perfect, it is malleable, fungible, and if it's alive, something else can happen to it. And so, I just didn't know, Mr. Chairman, I heard you speak to an amendment, or any amendments that might need to be added, and I asked that question because I was, actually, I pushed the queue in order to move that we would proceed. So, I don't want to be out of order in doing so if there are some amendments that need to be added. We will never, I shouldn't say never, we probably, if the community is responsible, as I think she is, and the citizens are as well, we will never hit the end of this because it's an imperfect document, much like our constitution, much like the charter of this city and this parish. And so, I think at some point, we've got to get it into the hands of people whose final votes will have something to do with it being effective. And so, that's not to, that's not to minimize the concerns that you all have had as colleagues as well, but I do think we may be overreaching trying to make it perfect, that which will never be perfect. But we can at least have a document to pass on to those who have responsibility beyond ours. I haven't been here four years working on this, but some of you have, and two years working on this. I think it's a good job, it's not a blank slate. It's a foundation or platform from which the other elected officials can build from, and that was, so I do appreciate everything everybody has said, but I don't think this is the last time they'll come, because there'll always, there will always be room for improvement, and I think that's kind of what we'll continue to do as we continue to serve. So, with that, don't know if there are any additional amendments.
I have, I have one in the queue, and I have, I do know there is that one potential amendment. So, let's cover those two, and then we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Remedies?
I think Mr. Sweeney made a couple of good points about some of the things that have been addressed, and my comments earlier were certainly not to be argumentative. I just wanted to be sure that we've taken everyone's opinion, and I agree that if we held another one tomorrow, we would have more comments, but I just wanted to make myself clear that my only concern was we asked people to come here for their opinions, and I wanted to be sure that we, but now that you, I mean, I can, I can understand we, we've addressed most of what was said tonight, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't, because if we call someone here and ask them for their opinion, that we at least give it a good answer. But I've taken some notes, and some of the things that, that I'm still concerned with, that I think I would just take up with some of the elected officials that I have good working relationships with, and that'll be their cross to bear once they. So, that was, it was in no way to stifle the process, it was just to be sure that we listen to everyone that we ask to come and speak.
Mr. Colvin?
As what we said, I will make that motion to add that amendment for that place out there close to Highway One. I'll make that motion now.
So, you're making a motion to amend the property on the west side of Yury?
The west side of Highway One.
Yes, sir.
Can I approach you for a moment?
Yes, sir. One moment, please.
The land. South of Leonard Road and western. Change on the map.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a pending motion, so once we get a motion, the second, you can make that motion to add that to the agenda, according to the Robert Schules of Order, okay?
Can I make a motion?
I have no one else in the queue, and Ms. DeMarto?
I make a motion.
recommended to the City Council and the Parish Commissioner for passage.
I have a motion by Ms. DeMarto, second by Dr. Pennywell, to accept the UDC document that's presented today with the amendments that Mr. Sweeney presented to us.
Correct.
Second by Dr. Pennywell. Now I will entertain any substitute motions or addition...
The substitute motion is...
Not a substitute, it wouldn't be an...
It'd just be an amendment.
Amendment to that motion, okay?
The land use map to show agriculture from west of Highway 1, south of Leonard Road. As part of the man at the podium stated, Mr. Jones, right? John Jones?
And second, and I have that motion, and a second by Theron Jackson. I will need to vote on the second, the amended motion, correct? Or can I do it totality? I think protocols, we did a vote on the amendment, then a vote on the document.
I think you just need a majority to vote on the amendment.
Majority to vote on amendment, so we're gonna vote on amendment by Mr. Colvin, seconded by, I'm sorry, it was seconded by?
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson. Now, this is the amendment to change the property from I-1 back to RA.
No, agriculture, right?
Yeah, agriculture. How's it listed in the new?
Mine's not listed.
Thank you, RA. Please vote. This is on the amendment?
The request.
Okay, there we go. Please vote now. Dr. Pennywell?
He's trying, he's hitting the bus. I'm seeing him.
And the amendment to change that property over is passed, we're back to the original motion. Any other comments on that? If not, I'll call for the vote. UDC passes unanimously. Is there any, I don't show anything else on the agenda. I don't want there to be. If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we are adjourned.
I served a purpose. Earn my pay.
You said it, you said it. Good.